So piggybacking Crystal's report. Finances through nine.
That's okay. I let you run over a little bit and I didn't even give you a one-minute warning, but I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It worked fine. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at this point and say good evenings, ladies and gentlemen, council members, city officials. Welcome to the September 22nd, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. We are meeting at 26 South Paint Street, Chillicothe, Ohio. And I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll as soon as she is ready to do that.
Thank you, President Shoemaker. Bennett?
Present.
Payne? McQuirt?
Here.
Barnes?
Here.
McKeever?
Here.
Dement? Preston? Dunn?
Here.
Creed?
Here.
And tonight, I'm gonna ask the clerk to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The minutes from the September 8th, 2025 Regular Meeting have been distributed. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Ms. Bennett, second by Ms. Payne. Clerk will call the roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
McQuirt?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Dement?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Minutes are approved. We'll now move to reports of committees. Development Committee, Mr. Dement.
Thank you, President Shoemaker. Development Committee has... Currently, we have four items on tonight's agenda. And I will be making a motion right after this announcement to remove item one. But just for now, this would have been a third resolution regarding the conveyance of the city-owned property of South Bridge Street. This item is also wrong, but we do have an item that will appear on the next agenda that will be correct. So I'll move on to item number two, which is the second reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the Ross County Board of Commissioners for the property of 89 Riverside Street for the development of the new Hopewell Regional Visitor Center. And I will also, at the appropriate time, request to waive the three-read rule on that one. Item number three is the second reading of an ordinance adopting the new Unified Development Code and repealing Part 11, Chapter 1321 and Chapter 1322 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chillicothe pursuant to ORC Section 71307 through Section 713.12. And lastly, item number six, which is the first reading of a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract between the City of Chillicothe and Green Township for a joint economic development district and declaring an emergency. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Engineering Committee, Ms. Dunn.
We have nothing on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Finance and Technology Committee, Mr. Creed.
Thank you, President Shoemaker. We have two items on the agenda tonight. Item number four is the first reading of a resolution authorizing the tax levies for the City of Chillicothe, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2026. As determined by the Ross County Budget Commission, at the appropriate time, I will make a motion to waive the three-read rule on this so we can get it done before the 1st of October. Just as a side note for everybody on council, these numbers, it's 1.7 million, a little bit more than that in property taxes. It does not include the 29% increase on residential properties. That's the average for the City of Chillicothe, plus increases on commercial and industrial properties as well. That amount will come to around another half million dollars for what we can figure at this point. So again, we just need to have discussions on that as well, once we have that final number. Item number five is an ordinance to approve the current replacement pages to the City, to Chillicothe Codified Ordinances declaring an emergency. And again, that's something that we do every year, so we'll let that go through the three reads. We did have a committee meeting on 25-072 last week. This was to consider options for Mulberry Street from water to Riverside, and the option was not to resurface it back in pavers and to resurface it as asphalt. The committee voted no on that option. The committee felt that with the longer timeframe, that the pavers are, the lifespan of those up to 100 years versus asphalt at 10 to 15, plus the fact that there was 1.7 million left in that project, and the bubble items on the project, per the Chief of Staff, came in around to 1.7, plus we have additional funding from ARPA for that project, or additional funding outside of that project from ARPA grant funds that we can cover some additional costs if we need to. So based on that information, we decided that it was in the best option to the city to keep that section of road in pavers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Human Resources Committee, Ms. Payne.
Thank you, President Shoemaker. We did have a committee meeting tonight, or earlier this evening, on Assignment 25-075, and that's an ordinance to authorize and guide the use of project labor agreements. And we had a nice discussion. We need to gather more information, so we're working on that, or we will be working on that. We do want to schedule a second meeting for October 13th at 6:30 here in council chambers. concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm gonna ask the clerk to send out a notice to everyone that's on our list that we send out information to announcing that particular committee assignment so we make sure that everybody's aware of that. Thank you again. Parks and Rec Committee, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you, President Shoemaker. We have nothing on the agenda for this evening, but I would like to bring up the renderings for the park renovation. Looks like all the stuff looks pretty good. I would like to clarify to the millions of folks watching from home about the skate park. The skate park is being torn down, but it is being rebuilt. I will be meeting with Clint Boggs, Chief of Staff, tomorrow, and a couple of local skaters to kind of go and look at the different areas where the new skate park will be built. So stay tuned for updates on that. Thank you.
I'm usually never very nervous, but now that I know millions are watching, that might change. Thank you for the report. Safety Service Committee.
Thank you, President Shoemaker. Safety Service has nothing on the agenda and has nothing to report.
Thank you. Utilities Committee, Mr. McKeever.
Thank you, President Shoemaker. Utilities has nothing on the agenda for tonight. However, I would like to make an announcement on Utilities Committee. We'll meet September 24th at 5:00 PM here in council chambers on Assignment 25-019 and 25-077. Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. City Services Committee, Mr. McQuirt.
Thank you, President Shoemaker. We have nothing on the agenda and nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Affairs Committee, Ms. Bennett.
Thank you, President Shoemaker. We don't have anything on the agenda this evening and have not had a meeting, so nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to reports of officials. Mayor Feeny.
Thank you, President Shoemaker. Comment on the Finance Committee meeting, I'm sorry, not Finance Committee meeting, the Budget Review Session that Otis Spetnicke held before this meeting. Just want to thank her for that work. And just sort of reiterate for everybody, since we're on a full meeting now, that this budget cycle, I think, will be one of our toughest challenges going forward. Not because the resources aren't there to bridge a gap, but because there's a lot of uncertainty in our future. And so, these budget review sessions, we've got, the department heads have already submitted, I think all of them now have submitted their proposed budgets. We're on a good timeline. And the question ultimately for all of us in this room and the public will be sort of figuring out what to do in light of significant revenue loss from our largest employer in the city. But I think because of the strong financial position we're in and have been in, we're in a position where we can at least tread some water and get through from a city perspective until we know more. A few other updates. Just comment on Councilman Dement's item number one. Ultimately, the question here is that there, essentially with some confusion, I think, on the language and the ordinance that is there now and the language that we need under the revised code. So I want to thank Councilman Dement, that committee, and the Law Director's Office for working through us, through that process with us. This is one of the first times we're utilizing the Community Improvement Corporation to do development, and ultimately, we want to get that development right. That's hopefully going to lead to housing for this community. And so, it's been a process to get the right legislation in front of you, but we appreciate your patience. I will also mention his other item, second reading on 89 Riverside Street. It's timely because since our last meeting, the building on that property was torn down. That was torn down with grant money that was facilitated through Land Bank. That was the old Chillicothe City School Bus Garage, and then it was our service and Parks and Rec Garage, and now it is ready to become the future home of the World Heritage Visitor Center at the corner of Mulberry and Riverside. So that's an exciting thing, and I think with that building down, it becomes a little bit easier to see, sort of imagine what that corner is going to look like. And as Councilman Creed mentioned, those bricks that'll lead right to that front door. So that's exciting. On that note, with the Land Bank, the Land Bank is also the facilitator of brownfield remediation money that is available to each county in Ohio. Last year, we, the Land Bank took its money and allocated it towards the remediation of a property that the city owns on 7th Street, right next to the transit facility. It's an old CSX property. There's gonna be about $800,000 worth of remediation on that property, a lot of dirt being removed, but ultimately making that site developable, 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 within the city limits and being remediated to the point where it could be residential if we ended up going that route. So that's an exciting thing, and another thing that the Land Bank has been able to help process in this community. Wastewater Treatment Plant Construction continues. A couple of the new processes will go online in the next couple of weeks. The way that is working is because it's a, basically a reconstruction project, a process will go offline and a new process will go online. As opposed to, actually in Portsmouth right now, they are constructing an entirely new facility, and their old facility will just cease working altogether one day and the new one will go online. So for us, we will have processes go on and offline, little by little. And then finally, probably the most exciting news is that we finally, finally, finally have been able to release the renderings. Councilman Barnes mentioned, the final park renderings are posted on the city page, the Engage page. I think they're up on Facebook. And they are, they give us the sort of, the artistic interpretation of what each of the new amenities is going to look like and their locations. As Councilman Barnes mentioned, you do not see a skate park in those renderings. That is not because we are not completing a skate park. And just for a little history, we asked for quite a few things in that grant application. There were three specific things that we were not granted in our application. The first of which was a splash pad, the second was a skate park, and the third was a pump track. A pump track is similar to a skate park for bicycles. The splash pad, we have secured $900,000 in congressionally-directed spending, so the splash pad is still happening, but because the renderings that you saw are for the Appalachian Community Grant Project only, you do not see the splash pad in those renderings. And that is actually, there's specific federal rules on that. But the splash pad is still happening and the funding is secured. The skate park, you heard me say the skate park, we were denied permission to build a skate park in this project. However, we were approved new pickleball courts, and in our proposal, we showed that those pickleball courts were going to go right where the skate park is. And so, we appealed to the state and said, really, it's not possible to do these pickleball courts without also doing the skate park, because we're not going to take away that amenity and not build the new amenity. And so, the reason you don't see them in the renderings is there's some decisions to be made about where that skate park goes so that it best encourages participation and kids and activity and that sort of thing. You'll notice in those renderings, lots of different things, but one of the goals was to increase passive green space. So there's a dramatic increase in square footage of green space in the park, and it's passive green space. So there's a lot of passive green space, which means there's no activity in that space for relaxation, walking, et cetera. You'll also notice a little bit better of clustering of activities. So Diamond One is going to be across the street from Bomber Field. You put baseball fields near each other, share parking, that sort of thing. Pickleball courts are gonna go right next to the tennis courts. People can park, they'd do similar activities. And then the skate park, similarly, will go a place where, two things we want to have happen. One is, we want it to be in a place where it's easier for kids to get to and it's safe, but also, we want to put it in a place where, when we secure additional funding, we can expand that space and put in that pump track, right? And so, the pump track, there was no space where the skate park is now to expand out and put a pump track. So the skate park is happening. We have confirmation from the State of Ohio. When we did that appeal, they approved our appeal, and they're permitting the skate park to be built within this funding. And then Councilman Creed did mention, we have set aside some money to supplement projects here and there. And so, the biggest challenge with this project has been the challenge that we're facing with everything right now, and that's pricing. So we have already had to scale back dramatically, which is the exact reason why we didn't want to show renderings and then pull things out, right? Originally, we had new sidewalks up and down Water Street. That's not happening. And so, we've had to pull things back. And so, what you see now, those amenities that are in that rendering, they are happening. And then just a side note, if you see something that should be there, and it's not in the rendering, like the bridge that goes across the lake, we are not taking that bridge out. It just was not in the artistic rendering. So no need to fret there. But please share that information. Please push those renderings out. It is really time to get excited about this project. I think we will start to see dirt move on these inside interior amenities in October. And then, of course, the Visitor Center is a completely separate $5 million that the county commissioners received. That's what item two is for, is that separate lease to the commissioners to lease that corner of the park where the Visitor Center will go. So I'm happy to have that stuff out in the public. It's an exciting time. It generates a lot of questions. Please feel free to push those questions to me or use the information that I provided tonight to answer them. I'm certain that there will be construction growing pains along the way, but it does feel good to have that out there and be moving dirt. With that, I will conclude my report.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I can say on behalf of council that we appreciate all the work that's gone into this, both you and your staff and all the council people that have looked at these things and worked with you. So this is a great opportunity for the city. So thank you again for that report. And now we'll move to the auditor.
I just want to let everyone know that I did do a budget review prior to this meeting, and I wanted to let everyone know that the presentation will be on the city website under the Auditor's Department. So if you want to see what was up on the screen, it will be, it's probably already up there. And then, on October 13th, we will have our first budget meeting starting at 5:30. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. There's no one from the Law Director, so we'll now move to audience participation. Any person wishing to address the council must first provide his or her name and address. Comments shall be limited to five minutes, and I will give you a warning when there is one minute remaining. Is that at the Resource Center? Okay.
Hello, my name, my legal name is Daniel Hassel, but I go by and prefer Landon. My address is 530 Arch Street, Chillicothe, Ohio. I'm certified in both nature and art therapy, mental, spiritual health and wellness, as well as fitness and nutrition. I am known for holding and hosting events such as the First Crampus Market, the Halloween in July, and the monthly open art show every last Monday over at 50 West. I come before you today to expose a significant piece of ugliness that's not only in our city amongst, but it is also amongst the bike path. And I know a few of you run, work out, and everything, so I'm not sure if you guys have seen this or not. Along the path, when you reach Adena Road, you go under a tunnel. When you reach this tunnel, you will get slight thoughts of dread, sadness, anger, fear, and a bunch of upsetting feelings. The outer walls of the tunnel are covered in graffiti, and upon entrance, you'll immediately be surrounded by words of ignorance, hate, sexual images. It's all there, all bright, all loud. You can see where, I don't know if it was the city or somebody has come along and tried to cover it before, but it just gets covered up again. I've talked to people in larger cities such as Dayton and Columbus that have had these issues with graffiti and areas covered like this. They say it's just a repetitive cycle. It gets covered by the city. People come back out, put new graffiti on it immediately. The only way they have suggested to stop this is to have local artists put up a mural, something bright, colorful, something that represents the community, art, music, everything positive. There are certain rules to graffiti artists, and one of those rules is, they won't paint over a local artist's mural. They just won't. It's a whole respect thing. Now, I know what a lot of you are thinking, like, a mural can be expensive, extremely expensive. And who wouldn't, who would have the money to pay for that when we already have amenities, everything else, all the construction going on? As the city and community that has only raised me but supported my art and my events, you can consider it as a kickback. All the cost and time would be on me. I ask for nothing from anyone, from the city, or any groups or individuals, other than permission to paint it and cover it up and bring you something new. So if that's something the city is interested in and would like to have done, I can do it, and it'll be covered. You guys won't have to worry about a thing.
That tunnel, I believe, is in the county? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. If there's no more audience participation, we'll move to old business and responses. Is there any old business to come before council?
President Shoemaker, I would like to take this opportunity to make a motion to remove item number one from tonight's agenda.
Is there a second to the motion, Mr. McQuirt? The clerk will call the roll relative to the motion to remove item number one from the agenda.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
McQuirt?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Dement?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Item number one will be removed and not read this evening. Is there any other old business? Hearing none. We'll move to petitions and correspondence.
Thank you, President Shoemaker. I've not received anything.
Next, we'll move to new business. Our next scheduled meeting would fall on a federal and state holiday on the 13th of October. And so, the question for this council is whether we'd like to move it. Apparently, I have the authority to move it, but last year, we had a discussion, and I think the schools were in I think the schools were in session, as well as the city itself was working on Columbus Day. So we went ahead and had the meeting on Columbus Day. So I'm going to just ask, what is the pleasure of this council relative to going ahead and having the meeting on that day? Hearing no objection, we'll go, we'll just go forward, and there won't be any rescheduling of that particular meeting. And with that, if there's no other new business, we'll move to the reading of ordinances and resolutions.
Thank you, President Shoemaker. With the removal of one item, we have five items on the agenda. Item number one is the second reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the Ross County Board of Commissioners for city-owned property located at 89 Riverside Street, parcel number 305401023600, for the development of a new Hopewell Regional Visitor Center and declaring an emergency.
President Shoemaker.
Mr. Dement?
At this time, I would like to make a motion to waive the three-read rule on this.
There's a second by Ms. Preston. The clerk will call the roll relative to the waiver of the three-read rule.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
McQuirt?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Dement?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
The three-read rule is waived. The clerk will call the roll relative to the ordinance.
Payne?
Yes.
McQuirt?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Dement?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted. Next ordinance.
Item number two is the second reading of an ordinance adopting the new Unified Development Code, UDC, and repealing Part 11, Chapter 1321 and Chapter 1322 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 713.07 through Ohio Revised Code, Section 713.12.
The ordinance will move to the next agenda, the next resolution.
Item number three is the first reading of a resolution authorizing the tax levies for the City of Chillicothe, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2026, as determined by the Ross County Budget Commission, certifying said levies to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Creed?
President Shoemaker, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three-read rule, please.
Second by Ms. Dunn. The clerk will call the roll relative to the waiver of the three-read rule.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
McQuirt?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Dement?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. The next ordinance.
Item number four is the first reading of an ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Chillicothe Codified Ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance will move to the next agenda, the next resolution.
Item number five is the first reading of a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract between the City of Chillicothe and Green Township for a joint economic development district and declaring an emergency.
The resolution will move to the next agenda. If there's no other business to come before council, I would accept a motion to adjourn by Ms. Payne, second by Ms. Bennett, and the clerk will call the roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
McQuirt?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Dement?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Creed?
Yes.
We are adjourned.